Thank you very much, everyone, for joining today's meeting. I'm currently not sick, just was coaching, so excuse my voice. I will try to project as much as possible. Today is Monday, April twenty-second, Board Business. We call this meeting to order. We will start by saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kaufman. Could you please take the role?
Yes, Ms. Hoffman's absent. Mr. Wright?
Here.
Ms. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Tom?
Present.
Dr. Callahan?
Here.
Ms. Co. Henry?
Present.
Ms. Ivory?
Present.
And Ms. Boykins?
Present.
Mr. Bangora?
Here.
Ms. Wise?
She's running late. She had a softball game.
Okay, Ms. Askew Green. And Ms. Faber. And that concludes our role.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kaufman. Comments from the Board President, which I know Dr. B. Coats is going to talk about our first track meet, so I want to leave that to him because that's really, really exciting news. But I just want to leave everyone with just a thought about change. Change is necessary. And I think that the biggest thing sometimes is we can be afraid of change. But one thing I want to say is that if you're open-minded enough to understand change and have an open perspective, you'll know that change is not always bad. So one thing I want to say is that be open to change because innovation is going to happen regardless, and it waits for no one. So I wanted to add that in because right now we are at a time of change. A lot of great things are going on in our district with our students, our schools. So be open to change and know that change has to occur just in life. So thank you for that. And I will open the floor to Dr. B. Coats in the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Ms. Boykins. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and to those of you who are joining us, thank you very much. I do have several items I would like to highlight tonight. I'm going to get us started. We have a few special sites, some items that we're going to celebrate success, and some community and district announcements. So I do want to thank Giant. Giant gracefully delivered a check to the William Penn School District in the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars. Giant has a Feeding School Kids Initiative. And so this is the amount of money that we received this year, but I also think it's important for you to understand what we've used the money for in the previous three years that we've received funding. We were able to actually, and some of you may see these containers sitting in front of students' classrooms at the elementary level. This is what we've utilized some of the money for to put breakfast in. Another item that we've used dollars for is the knife safety program. All schools' cafeterias have this item in their cafeterias where they store knives for safety. And then the third year of the roundup funding, we were able to actually purchase new speed racks and sheet trays for every school. So these are some of the ways that the dollars are being utilized that Giant has provided to our district. The second item I wanted to just give a special thanks to these three students. We will always hold a special bond because I told these three students as a part of my podcast, they actually, as I said, made me get misty because I said at the time, men don't cry, we just get misty. And that's just a little joke, but they really talked about the benefit and what joy meant to them as a part of being a part of the William Penn School District. And it was just very insightful, and it was very touching to hear them talk about their experiences in our school district. Next, Donors Choose. We are very pleased to continue to receive support from Donors Choose. You will see the two schools that they have supported within the last month. Also, I want to thank teachers' teammates. We received an email, and they had pallets of poster board that they had available that they wanted to give to any schools. So we inquired with our principals, and I believe this last week, all of the poster boards were delivered to our schools, and so that's an item that schools received free of charge. I also want to say congratulations and thank you to all of our student, staff, and families who did complete our annual climate, culture, and engagement survey. We did indicate to families, if they completed the survey, that we would do a random drawing. And so these are the five families that received a fifty-dollar Amazon gift card. And you will see the schools that they represented. We will be providing the board with an update on the survey results, I believe, at our next education committee meeting. Also, congratulations to Mr. Nathan Wachter. He has received the Keystone Technology Interfater Award. So I do want to say congratulations to him. He's at Artmore Avenue Elementary. The DCIU provides awards each year, making a difference. And this year, Ms. Anna Smith, Principal of Artmore, won that award for demonstrating extraordinary efforts to support children with disabilities. Also, the DCIU awarded Zamir Porture an award for making a difference. And so this is the student that's been awarded. He is a student at Pinewood High School. So I want to say congratulations to Zamir. I also want to say congratulations. Again, we have, you know, our staff as well as our students are doing great things. Andrea Fink is an academic interventionist at East Lansdowne Elementary School, and she has been elected as the PSEA Southeastern Region President for the Pennsylvania State Education Association. So congratulations to Andrea on that election. A few announcements. I had the opportunity to attend the inaugural Raff Caring Invitational this past Saturday at the athletic complex. Forty-seven schools participated. These are just some of the pictures. It was very inspirational to see that number of people on the field. You will see here that investment pays off. We were actually able to raise ten thousand five hundred and fifty dollars from this event, and that's the amount to date. Dollars are still being calculated, but it is very important to note that this investment in this complex will continue to provide revenue for us to further our athletic programs in our district. It's also important to note that there were no incidents as a part of this event when it was held last Saturday. So I do want to thank the coaches and everyone who put this on and participated to actually make this, to make this happen in our district. Also, just wanted to let you know that recently we did hear from some of our Yaden residents who had made a request for us to consider modifying the times that the field would be open. So I am pleased to share with you that we did make that modification after observing the use of the field for a few weeks. And so it will open at five o'clock a.m., and the closing times are still the same, seven p.m. and five p.m. accordingly, with the months as listed there. The other thing I will share with you is that we did inform the borough, the borough manager, as well as the larger community. So I did want to share that information with the board. Secondly, in terms of listening to our community, we had an opportunity to attend a zoning meeting this past week. And it was pretty evident to me that our community was asking for an opportunity to learn more about the new additions at the Pinewood High School. So on May the fourteenth, from six p.m. to eight p.m. at the Pinewood High School, Green Avenue campus, we will be hosting a school facility improvement information meeting. And it's just that. It's a meeting in which residents can come and get information about our current plans for this facility. So I did want to make sure that our public is aware of that, and we will continue to communicate this. We will also be putting these flyers in the doors of the immediate surrounding area of the high school. Just as a reminder, on Wednesday, we start our PSSA state testing, and this is our schedule. So please, families, please make sure that your children arrive in such a way that they are ready to participate in the test. It is very, very important, and we look forward to supporting our students through this process. Just a reminder, our hiring fair is Thursday, May the ninth, from four to seven p.m. at Pinewood High School. We have various positions available. You can click on this link. You can also see what positions are available on our website. So I encourage you to please come out and support that event if you are looking for employment. And lastly, we will continue to offer our summer enrichment programs this summer, focusing on students in grades K through six and students in grades at the high school level who want to have summer math acceleration. But these are the two flyers. You can get that information on our website as well. Madam President, I think that concludes all of my remarks for the students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. B. Coats. As I stated, he was going to talk about the track and field. I just want to make emphasis. It's an amazing thing. I just have to speak on it, not only because, you know, we're a part of it, but I know that Rep. would be very proud of what's going on right now. We never knew this day would come where we could have a facility of that magnitude. And our summer looks very bright. Every summer, every fall looks very bright. And I'm just, I'm just very happy about it, the turnout. Our kids now have something that they can look up to, and they can say, you know what, we hold invitationals as well. And we don't have to go down the road and see an invitational. We can hold it right in our backyard. So as you see, the revenue from it is an amazing thing as well. And let me, let me, let you know that that revenue will build. That's just, that's a small number compared to what you're going to see in the future. So I'm just very thankful for it, and hopefully one day our athletic program can pay for itself. You know, that's one of the goals we're looking forward to. So thank you very much for that, and to all the residents. Mr. Wright?
Oh, yes. I know Dr. B. Coats mentioned that it will be open from five a.m. in the morning. When would it close?
Seven p.m.
And will they be walking on the track? Will they still be on the pad?
They can walk on the track.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and to our Yaden residents, we heard you, and we've made the change. So thank you for that. All right, moving right along. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda for April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, business meeting of the Board of School Directors?
So moved or seconded?
All right, all those in favor? No, actually, in comments, questions, or concerns? All right, hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those against? All right, can I get a motion to approve the business meeting from March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, the Board Business Meeting of the Board of District Directors?
So moved.
Same.
Any comments, questions, or concerns? All right, hearing or seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, also, can I get a motion to approve the education committee meeting from April tenth, twenty-twenty-four?
So moved.
Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing or seeing none, all those in favor? What do you?
Aye, sorry.
All right, all those against? All right, can I get a motion to approve the committee meeting of the whole from April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any comments, questions, or concerns? All right, hearing or seeing none, all those in favor? All those again? All right, now we get to our best part. Thank you very much, Board Directors. Remarks from our student representatives. First of all, thank you very much, guys. It is so good to see you. Eli, I love the hair color. Morgan, I love the orange, you know. And Mo, we want to hear those schools, sir. You know, I'm very happy and happy to see everybody. We miss you guys. So let's get to business. Mo, what you got for us?
Um. Aside from senioritis and the collagen acceptances, me and my fellow friend and advocate at the high school, Gianna, we have been going to the DCIU every month. And we kind of been, me and other students from different schools, and basically kind of talking about how to like plan a playbook for schools to kind of like follow and like go through, like, just to make like the community a better place as far as just like the school aspect. And like things we kind of came up with was building an inclusive environment, taking care of others and self and others, realize and recognize, empower itself and others, and use language intentionally. And at the DCIU in Morton, the playbook for dignity belonging in Delaware County schools, so it's not just like, you know, our schools for different schools across Delaware County. And as far as my experience, it definitely like opened my eyes to like show me how other schools kind of relate to us, go through the same problems that we kind of do. It's not just us. We had a lot of similarities as far as like the whole like classroom aspect, like teachers sometimes not understanding us or like in that sort of nature. And yeah, I think this book could really like move schools as far as like, as far as the Delaware County aspect, because we all like are in like the Delco area. This is actually for Dr. B. Coats, but if you guys want to look through it, follow through that.
So, so first of all, congratulations on that, and thank you for taking the time to go and learn about diversity and inclusivity because it's very important. And Dr. B. Coats, he has a playbook for you, so you can, you have it already?
I do not, but I do want to let you know, I did see a version of that, and we will be sharing that with the larger community, specifically our principals as well as teachers. There, there's a lot of information in there that I think we as adults need to take into account when we talk about working with and supporting young people. Because that is a document that young people have developed, and they're telling us what it is that they believe we need to do to better support them. So that definitely, definitely will be used in our district, and thank you so much.
If you give me extra, bring me one.
I think it'll make me that the board hasn't.
Yeah, I think it's on our website, too.
On the website. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything else, Mo?
That's all.
All right, May first is that deadline, sir. Decision Day. We want to hear it. Okay, so thank you very much. Our next person is Ms. Jayla Wise, our eleventh grade representative. Welcome back, Jayla, and what do you have for us? She's on the call. She's on the phone. All right. All right, then we'll go right into our Ms. Morgan Askew Green. And Ms. Morgan, what would you, welcome back, and what would you, what do you have for us?
Um, as of right now, I went back in the day, we didn't really have any large complaints. I think right now that it's just very cold in the building.
Very cold in the building.
It doesn't matter which classroom we go to, it's just very cold and kind of uncomfortable. We know that like, since it's getting, it's supposed to getting warmer, that a lot of the heating has been turned off. We were wondering if we could do something about that for this really uncomfortable being in the building.
Okay, Dr. B. Coats is notating that, and we'll work on seeing what we can do to improve it. All right, anything else?
No, other than that, fine.
All right, thank you so much. Next, we will go to Eli Faber, our ninth grade representative. Welcome back, Eli.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, same thing. It's been sort of cold. But also, there's a, I guess there's been a bit of confusion in the dress code, something really about showing the shoulders. And that, when I looked on the website, there was nothing on it specifically talking about shoulders. It was the specific clothing, like no spaghetti straps and that sort of thing. So there was just confusion about some of my peers trying to like, what is against the dress code?
Okay, so we need to clarify if shoulders are?
On the, on the website.
Okay, all right. Dr. B. Coats is notating that. Joy, do you have any, anything from policy for that or anything with regard? Because we just worked on the dress code policy. So I guess Ms. Hopkins will take that into note as well, and we'll, we'll circle back. Okay, thank you very much.
On better notes, we just had our honors breakfast. There was a lot of students that attended, and some good news.
Okay.
Administration has been very present, like in the morning during transitions and after school. I want to make a comment of that, because it's also very good.
Okay.
Otherwise, I've heard nothing.
Thank you very much for notating that, how Ed have been present as well. And congratulations on the honors breakfast.
I got one more question.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Eli. Yep.
Um, so a lot of students, they asked me about, as far as, as far as the Wi-Fi, and I'm, I'm not able to answer that question. They asked me like, we're, as far as the Wi-Fi, are we getting the Wi-Fi back, and they keep?
Yeah, well, I know. I see you the other day, and so I told them about the Wi-Fi, like how we're changing, you know, some things. And you want to comment a little more about Wi-Fi? Students are a little upset that they can't get onto the Wi-Fi anymore?
Is Ms. Ag, Dr. Ag, can you come through the podium and speak to that, please? Just make sure that the button is pushed so the people on Zoom can hear. Thanks.
Yeah, so previously, we had a guest Wi-Fi throughout the district. About a long ago, a threat was made against a school employee. There were several threats made, and they were made on the guest Wi-Fi using a software. So we needed to close down that breach. And so we tried to access on the Wi-Fi, and so now the password, it's, we can now check if we can find the Wi-Fi. Did you work for this, like, school district?
Okay. So most, go ahead and ask.
Oh, no, I was, you know, because it wasn't my question. As soon as we're asking like, so, because you know, like, in the school, they usually tell, oh, just use your data. But like, the way our school is kind of built, it's kind of hard to like, you know, get the right perception because like, the way, the way it's built with the building and stuff like this. They were asking me like, are we going to get you somehow like, gee, like, Wi-Fi, like, what's the plan?
We have Wi-Fi for district development. So if you're on a district development, you can use the Wi-Fi.
That's why I like the cell phone.
As far as cell phones, there was a security breach, and that was verified by the local police department when the president called that we shouldn't have a Wi-Fi.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that concludes all remarks from our senior representatives. Once again, welcome back, and thank you for what you do for our district. Next, we're going to go to our next exciting part of the program, our special awards, well, of the meeting, special awards. The subject is our Penn FTRA Communications Award. Ms. Krista Fazio, the President of the Pennsylvania School Public Relations Association, will present Dr. B. Coats with the 2023 Key Communicator Award. Let's give a round of applause for Ms. Krista Fazio. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. I've been really enjoying just learning about your district and hearing all the great things from the students. Congratulations on your track. That's amazing. I was in track in high school, so I loved seeing that. But I'm here for something really exciting and really special, and this is something that's near and dear to my heart. I've been in education communications for twelve years. Deirdre and I were one and the same because we kind of started around the same time and when it wasn't a priority for a lot of districts. And I have now seen that a district professional at a school, a communication professional in a school district is not a luxury, it's a necessity. And I really admire district leaders who see that and notice that and invest in that. And Dr. B. Coats is one of those district leaders that we just admire for realizing that communication and education is a priority. And that's a testament to all of you as well, as the board members of this school district, for recognizing the importance of communication, having a leader who champions communication, and of course, having a wonderful staff who sees it too. So congratulations to all of you as well.
Thank you.
So as you mentioned, I'm the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania School Public Relations Association. I also have a day job. I'm the Director of Communications, Marketing, and Engagement for the Chillicothe County Intermedia Union. The Penns, the Pennsboro Key Communicator Award honors an education professional who has successfully contributed to the field of communication. This is only the second year that we've given this award out. And again, this, the recipient of this award cannot be a communication professional in education. It's one of our peers, one of our peers who we recognize as being a champion of communication. This year's Key Communicator Award goes to Dr. Eric B. Coats, who serves as the superintendent at William Penn's School District. Dr. B. Coats joined William Penn's School District in the beginning of 2020, taking on the role during a time greatly impacted by COVID-19. In the turbulence of the pandemic, he diligently built a strong foundation based on the establishment of clear communication channels and strong community relationships with the district. He later used that foundation to garner staff and community input to launch the William Penn School District Strategic Plan as well as tracking documents that showed progress made and how it impacted the district. This approach displayed clear outcomes, all of which were shared on the district's website to facilitate community knowledge, engagement, and transparency. Following the development of the strategic plan, Dr. B. Coats launched annual surveys for staff, students, and their families. The findings from these surveys and from a strategic plan are shared with the district community, ensuring continuous growth and improvement. Additionally, Dr. B. Coats has streamlined communication with the community through consistent connection and messaging, from creating a bi-weekly video update to staff, students, and their families, to holding quarterly, quarterly convocation with staff members and invite your council with district family. He also created Employee of the Month Program to recognize the work of the William Penn School District teachers and staff and enhance internal engagement. And I was really excited to hear about the podcasts. I have to tune into those. So we are so proud of Pennsboro to recognize Dr. B. Coats as a true champion of education communications in Pennsylvania. The Penns, Pennsboro Key Communicator Award is a testament to Dr. B. Coats' unwavering commitment to open and transparent communication and meaningful engagement. He exemplifies the qualities of a key communicator, consistently demonstrating excellence in communication and a genuine commitment to fostering positive relationships across the district community. He is truly deserving of this distinguished honor. Congratulations, Dr. B. Coats. A very special award here for you, as well as just a sort of, also to share the news. Yeah, no, we're truly honored. Like, this brings me so much joy. And you should know, too, that Dr. B. Coats was selected by a panel of communication directors and professionals in education across the state. Thank you all for having me.
Yes, Ms. Fazio, I just want to say thank you. I hope I pronounced your last name properly. Just, we want to say thank you for acknowledging our superintendent. Communication is key. We don't always get it right, but he uses a hundred percent, like, everything you stated about him with trying to keep communication up. We don't have a PR department. And he makes sure that Ms. Deidra and they communicate all the time and just making sure we're trying to catch everything that happens in the district. Even though if it's late or it's on time, it's still communication, which is really, really important and is needed in today. So to acknowledge him across the state, to me, speaks a lot. And if this is only your second year, we're headed in the right direction with communication. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, what we're going to do is we are going to go to our public comments on agenda items. So if there's anyone in the public that has a comment about an agenda item, we ask that you come to the podium, you state your first and last name, and what area you're from, and we will, you'll have the floor. So is there anyone that has a comment on agenda items? Say it again? Oh, no, 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 no. Jayla's coming. Yeah. Hi, Jayla. Listen, you don't have to apologize. You're on the move. You're doing what students do, student athletes. Congratulations. Our softball team won, it sounds like, okay? So Jayla, you can go ahead and get yourself together, and we're going to go to public comments, and I'll circle back. Okay, so get yourself organized over there. Are there any public comments at this time on agenda items? Agenda?
Yeah.
Yes, all right. Yes, alright.
Hello, everyone. Hello, my name is Yara Commodore. I'm the Lieutenant Secretary of Pinewood High School. And also the W P S P A meeting president. Um, the first item that I wish to discuss is on a. Ten, I'll just report staff. It says that, um, ten is our meeting is the new I A at East Lansdowne. Is that the starting salary for that I A or?
Thank you very much for your comment. I mean, your question, I'm gonna divert to, uh, Ms. Tracy, uh, our H R Director. If you could, um, answer this, please. Uh, page ten, that will be under, uh, C, C. C three, item C, support stamp.
Having my instructional assistant. Okay, so. Backing aside conversation, because that amount goes against our contract.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention and I guess you and Ms. Tracy will talk about that at another time. Thank you very much.
The next item is. On the personnel commitment. A, the new principal that's coming here to, um, Pinewood Middle Schools.
What page are you on?
Oh, sorry, page fifteen.
Okay, thanks. Fifteen A? Alright, yes.
So, new principals that are coming in is getting a pay raise of three thousand dollars more than the previous principal.
Okay.
Understandable, is that correct?
This is their rate of pay.
And the previous principal leaving out the same amount of that they had going to another position within the district.
That is correct.
And when was this position posted?
That position was posted over a year ago and it has remained vacant for over a year.
So we just automatically just move her automatically into that position?
Yes, as the superintendent, I do have the ability to administratively place that. That is correct, right, Mr. Khan?
That is correct.
And in reference to the principal at Pinewood Middle School, the salary was. Um, looked at in comparison to other administrative salary within the district at that level. Specifically principals at the secondary level.
Very, so. It just kinda gives a bad feeling and a communication to those. Um, on the lower scales that we always making, there's always accommodation for those of administrative. But when it comes for E S Ps and other individuals, there's, um, always an excuse and we're not considered. And it's rather unfair. And I know my members are really upset about it. And I am definitely one who's upset about it as well, because it's not fair. We keep struggling, we keep asking and we keep pushing and pushing and pushing, then we keep trying to hang in there. But hanging in there is becoming very tough. There's always saying, work with us, work with us, gain hope, but hope is a mission. And I can honestly say that. And also, don't forget Wednesday for your Administrator Assistant Day. Please show much respect to our Administrator Assistant on the twenty-fourth.
Thank you very much, Ms. Commodore. Uh, one second. Thank you very much, um, Ms. Commodore. Um, alright. Ms. Michinda, you have.
People can be moved in a district at your discretion, no matter what.
Administrators.
How is that possible?
So I'm gonna refer to Dr., I mean, Mr. Khan with regard to the question that you stated. How can our superintendent have right for administrative mov- moving? So if you can speak to that?
The, the default position is that the employer can move employees wherever they want. For teachers, there is involuntary transfer language in their collective bargaining agreement and there are some transfer language in for the support staff as well. But in the absence of some contract that says you can't be transferred, the regular old Pennsylvania rule is employer can put you where you want.
I get that part, but if you said this position was vacant, you just gave it to somebody, you're not interviewed for, that's like.
It, it was, that position was interviewed.
This position moved before a year and you gave it to somebody who lied on her staff, basically. And y'all not, there's nothing being done, the lady still got a job. I'm just confused with how that even works. In the scope of anything.
Well, how it works is that he has a decision and I do understand what you're saying, but he does have the decision, so that's how we would have to answer that, that. State that question of how. So, side conversation, his door is always open, you can schedule to meet with them. If you, you can schedule to meet with them. Um, I know you may have more to say, but I'm just saying he's always open to hear. So if you can schedule a meeting with them, that would be great. And we can go from there. Alright, thank you for your time. Okay, so are there, uh, the, yes, we have someone online. Ms. Miller? Hey, hello Nicole, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you, everybody. Good evening. I just wanted to publicly say congratulations to our superintendent, Dr. B Coats. Um, for that honor, um, I think that any type of award of this magnitude sheds such a positive light on our district. I think it's very well deserving and I can say that as a former student, as a parent here in the district, as a teacher, as a community member. It's well deserved and thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Alright, with that being said, we're gonna close our agenda comments at this time. There are nothing no more. We're gonna go right to our next item. Oh, yes, thank you very much. So, Ms. Wise, first and foremost, welcome back. I love the new hair. Okay, I didn't notice you at first. Um, so we have taken all the other student representative comments. Um, do you have any comments or concerns you would like to bring to the board at this time?
Um, so, nothing much from the junior class. We are trying to plan our end of the year trip to either Thrills in King of Presha or Funflex in New Jersey. But other than that, we're doing pretty fine. There's nothing to really report.
Okay, well, thank you very much and also congratulations to our softball team in your Wednesday. Alright, next we're gonna go to our, um, our communications. So, uh, Mr. Kaufman, are there any communication? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Next, we're gonna go to our committee reports. Uh, we're gonna start with our community relations agenda read by the chairs, myself. A one hiring fair, Dr. B Coats already spoke on this, uh, with our hiring fair just stating again, it's May ninth. Um, from four P M to seven P M, which that is a Thursday, it's going to be in our high school, um, in the. In the gym at our high school. A two, uh, kindergarten open house, that, uh, that is. As you see, our rising kindergarten students and their families are invited to attend an open house, uh, as you see Alden Elementary. Um, Art Moore Avenue and Cowen are on May twenty ninth. Right, yeah, May twenty ninth and, um, Bell Avenue already had there, uh, on March twentieth and also June tenth. East Lansdowne, uh, is April seventeenth and June tenth. And then Evans Elementary is June twelfth, Park Lane is, is May seventh and Walnut Street is May thirteenth. So that's where our kindergarten open houses and you can see the times are there as well. Next, we have our Pinewood High School Parent Night. This is awesome. So our parents and guardians of Pinewood High School students are invited to attend, uh, Parent Night regarding the Act one fifty-eight graduation requirements. On Wednesday, May first, the meeting will take place in auditorium, auditorium. There will be two sessions, a nine A M to ten A M and a four P M to five P M. Um, parents only need to attend one session. This is awesome, cause we're getting communication out about graduation. Parents, you don't have to question things, just try to be there in the morning, um, or take the evening, uh, communication as well, uh, session. A four are summer, summer office hours. Um, as you see, they're listed, uh, Monday through Thursday. Uh, starting August second will be seven thirty, I'm sorry, starting June twenty fourth to August second will be seven thirty to four forty-five P M. Uh, on Fridays, all school district, all schools and district offices will be closed. And the specific Friday dates are listed below as well. And that concludes the community, community relations agenda. Um, at this time, are there any comments, questions or concerns? Alright, hearing or seeing none, we're gonna go to B, our Education Committee Agenda, uh, read by our Chair, Ms. Valerie Cook Henry.
Good evening, everyone. Education Committee Agenda. B one, release settlement agreement and the motion is to approve the release and settlement agreement. Negotiated between the William Penn School District and the parents of student as indicated. B two, expulsion waiver agreement and that motion. Is, um, the recommendation is. The following students are recommended for expulsion and subsequent placement in the personalized learning community. The expulsion timeframe for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. School term is detailed in the report below if students has not already successfully graduated from the school district. Information detailing the reasons is on file in the Student Service Office. And B three. And the motion is to approve out of state student field trips for the end of the school year. And we have Alden. And that is the Adventure Aquarium, Walnut Street, Baltimore, Maryland. There is also Walnut Street, Clementon Park, Pinewood High School, G A C. Six Flags Great Adventure. And last, we are more, um, going to the Funplex in Mount Laurel, New Jersey. B four, in-state trips and the motion is to approve the state field trips which exceed the thirty mile. Limitation. B five, um, that is Dorney Park for Pinewood Ninth Grade Academy and Art Moore Hershey Park. B five, additions to the agenda agreement with Lakeside. And that motion is to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four contract. Agreement and addendum between Lakeside and the William Penn School District. The agreement is subject to district solicitors review and approval of form and content. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, um, Ms. Cook Henry. Um, are there any comments, questions? Oh, yes, can, can I get a second? Alright, are there any comments, questions and concerns with regard to our Education Committee Agenda? Alright, hearing or seeing none, all those in favor? All those against? Okay. Going to our Personnel Committee Agenda read by our Chair, Ms. uh, Wadia Ivory.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
C one, retirements. Uh, we would like to congratulate Susan Spassif. Certified Nurse District Wide. We would like to thank you for your years of service. You've been with the district since February first, twenty seventeen. Thank you for caring for all of our students and we just wish you well on your years of retirement. C two, resignations. C three, appointments. I would like to contract, congratulate Termica Williams, Bad Emotional Support at Walnut Street. Kendall Serleaf, Instructional Assistant at East Lansdowne, welcome to the district. C four, there are no changes in assignment. C five, leaves of absence. C six, there are no mentors. C seven, miscellaneous appointments. C eight, there are no tenure awards. C nine, there are no salary track changes. C ten, there are no miscellaneous. And C eleven, there are no modifications. C twelve, we do have additions to the agenda, congratulating Keith Pretlow. For the position of principal at Pinewood Middle School. His start date would be July one, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Pretlow, we would like to welcome you to the district. And we look forward to working with you. B, change of assignment. And, Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ivory. Can I get a second?
Second, thank you.
Any comments, questions and concerns at this time? Alright, hearing, hearing or seeing none, all those in favor? All those against? Alright, moving to our Policy Committee Agenda, um, I'm gonna, we don't, actually, we don't, I'm sorry, property. Our property, I'm sorry. Our property agenda, here it is. Yes, so, Mr. Tong, I know you don't have anything for property right now, but do you have any comments from property or any updates or something you wanna provide?
Uh, just that, um, Dr. B Coats shared earlier that there will be a meeting on May sixteenth. Regarding, um, Green Act Avenue campus, um, extension, so, I'm sorry, fourteen, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
May fourteen, um, at six P M, uh, for those who are interested, please come on in. That concludes my comment and report.
Thank you very much. I wanna stress that, everyone, please come out to that meeting. Um, we are, we wanna hear what residents have to say. Uh, we don't wanna wait last minute, so please come out. Um, to that meeting. Yes, we're gonna hear positive stuff, we're gonna hear negative stuff, but at the end of the day, that's your forum to speak so we can hear. What you have to say. So thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Tong. Um, next is our Budget and Finance Committee Meeting, I mean, our Committee Agenda. Um, I will be reading that today in the absence of Ms. Hall. Also, happy passover to everyone as well. E one, uh, Treasurer's Report, Report. E, uh, E two, list of bills. E three, Delaware County, uh, Community College Budget. E four, agenda to the addition, uh, uh, addition to the agenda, addendum to, addendum to the bond purchase agreement. Um, I know she always likes that red, so I'm gonna just say, this motion is to approve an addendum to the Board Bond Purchase Agreement. Dated March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, setting forth the final terms of the school district's general obligation bond series. Of twenty twenty-four and the aggregate principal amount, um, of, um, nine million nine hundred and ninety, ninety-five dollars. Um, the twenty twenty-four bonds, which are within the parameters set forth in the resolution. Uh, the total aggregate of, uh, principal amount of the twenty twenty-four bonds issued was nine million nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Um, two billion and five, five, five dollars less than the twelve million maximum aggregate principal amount of the non-electoral debt. Encured by the resolution. That's a lot of financial jargon. But, um. That is the motion for that, uh, item. So, uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Alright. Or any comments, questions or concerns? Alright, all those in favor? All those against? Alright, hearing or seeing none, Policy Committee Agenda, um, we're gonna have, um, this. Well, actually, there's nothing for Policy Committee Agenda at this time. We will just, um, make sure that we announce our future Policy Committee, uh, meeting for Ms. Hopkins. We will just, um, make sure that we announce our future Policy Committee uh, meeting for Ms. Hopkins. Um, our Solicitors Report.
Uh, uh, thank you, only to report that there was an executive session uh, this evening, April twenty-second, immediately preceding the board meeting to discuss two personnel items.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Um, next, we will go to our liaisons uh, for our uh, Delaware County Community College. Uh, Mr. Wright, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, admission dual enrollment, high school dual enrollment teachers, education program recruitment for the fall twenty twenty-four. Porchester Charter School Academy, four students, three Upper Darby. One Stratheaven, Wallenford Swarthmore, one Haverford, one Britley, one Penwood, and one Avon Grove. April twenty-four scheduled recruitment activities. Uh, one Delaware Valley Science Fair, College Fair that will take place. Uh, for four twenty-three, me for uh, April the third. Next was open, uh, open, uh, open program for uh. For counselors, Oxford High School, application completion day, nine AM to eleven AM. Upper Darby College Fair, le- eleven forty-five to four PM. Carroll College and Center College Fair. Ten and Downing Town, Downing Town Fair. Uh, next Delaware County Marple Newton STEM Career Day, that will be from ten AM to one PM. At the Marple New, New, Newtown. And um. Next, Allah Health and Nursing under Dean Allah Health and Nursing Jenny. Leadership DCC Associate Degrees Nursing Program submitted in twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. And report for nursing education advisor review and board scoring by PA State Board of Nursing. The important scores were approved and the program remains on the board list of approved professional nursing education program. Fall approval. Next, I will go back to our DCC um, Career STEM Day, which I'm very excited for about. That will take place April the fourth. At, you know, it started ten AM to nine PM, but we would, I mean, four PM, then we would meet at nine o'clock at the high school. I'm proud to say that thirty students of parent permission slips. And I'm proud of the committee, because this was done on a short notice. And I'd like to acknowledge uh, everybody who was involved made that possible. Uh, Dr. Eric B. Coats, Dr. Ch- Chicano, Baby Brown, Amy from DCC. Ms. Dietrich, and with her flyer, she's still here.
Yeah, she is.
And we really appreciate that, that, that was done rapidly. Ms. Kim, who, uh, she called me Sunday morning. Says she, uh, she's a robotic and engineer, uh, teacher, she will be there. Uh, Jennifer Huff, Mr. Joseph, who will probably be one of our chaperones, and myself. And finally, I got the report from Bonnie Prinney cost, that would be sixty-six. Um, thousand, you know, sixty-six million dollars. For the approval of Bonnie Prinney, the capacity academic students would be eight hundred. And the completion date would be the fall, fall. And once again, as I said, I would like to thank everybody who participated, this was done in very short notice and. And to show what we can do to help our children when we come together. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Wright for that report. And the Bonner Prinney, that's the extension you're talking about? That's sixty-six million for the, for Delaware County?
Yes.
So, the total cost is sixty-six million for them to add that bill to the. Settle like campus, okay.
And they're saying fall twenty-four?
No, twenty, twenty-five.
Fall of twenty-five, it'll be finished. Did they finally get the money, all of it?
Well, I would probably, oh, yeah, and what I did forget to mention, the person who sent me this, she's the Chief Financial Officer, she's also CPA. Her name is Patricia Benson, I would probably call her again, and you know, I always like to do a cheap, cheap plug, uh, she's a Hampton graduate.
Awesome, awesome.
And so, uh, she would be very vital, so I would probably be, I can be in contact with her tomorrow or, or, or Wednesday.
Okay, okay, awesome. Thank you very much. Um, next, we'll go to, oh, what, does anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Wright? I'm sorry. For our Delaware County, all right, next, we have report from our Delaware County um, Intermediate Unit. Is it anything, Joy, you have to report?
No, I had nothing to report. We had, um, Winston Convention this, this, um, this month. And, uh, it was very insightful to meet the different school boards around the. You know, our country, and that's important around our country, and have conversations regarding that, and see. Um, um, you know, the different things that, it's just amazing to be able to see that. The things that we fight here for here, the same things that we're fighting for throughout the country. And it's just amazing to be able to talk to other folks and how. Uh, I sat in more on more of the policy and the superintendent evaluation. Uh, with the workshop that I've done Saturday, and so, um, I think I've grown for. Um, for their support, and y'all know, I forgot the hot sauce, so I have to do a hot sauce. I have to bring that next month.
And who was the guest speaker?
Uh, Ruby Bridges was one of the, oh, my God, that was phenomenal. Thanks for reminding me of that. And, um, very phenomenal speaker, and she said, and I, I am never gonna forget what she said was. You don't know, you don't know Ruby Bridges, you know what you know of Ruby. And to me, that was very, you know, phenomenal to hear, because we all, we all made up our own stories of how. This young lady, and for those who don't know, Ruby Bridges was, um, the, uh, African-American young lady that, um. He said, engaged the school, her elementary school, and she said, and what was amazing to her was the teacher. Who just befriended her and made her feel so special, like she was, you know, one of her own. And she said it was just really phenomenal to have that experience. Um, she said her parent, one, her father was like, no, 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 but her mom was like, we're gonna make this opportunity for her. So, it was just really phenomenal to hear that. I want y'all to know, I snuck in on that there. On that, on that talk, but that was really phenomenal, but everything else was really great, and I'll bring y'all hot sauce next month.
Thank you, thank you for that, and, um, she also told us, Ruby said, don't give up the fight in what we're doing, so. She was really excited about that, and that, so we were, she was messaging us while we were, while she was down there, so thank you very much uh, for that, Ms. Hopkins. Um, at this time, are there any comments, questions, concerns with regards to our, uh, Delaware County Intermediate Unit, uh, report? All right, hearing or seeing none, we're gonna go to our Delaware County Legislative Council. Uh, Ms. Hoff is not here today, so any questions about legislate, legislation, we will, uh, refer to that in our main meeting. All right, Mr. Kaufman, is there any old business?
None.
All right, is there any new business?
None.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kaufman. At this time, are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Yes, if you can, uh, come to the, um. Podium?
I have a question. So, Governor Shapiro announced that, uh, their four-day school week, four-day school. You're not doing that in this district.
No.
And then that, it's not a four-day, what they did was they changed it so you can do it by hours instead of days. Theoretically, you could do a three-day school week if you got the hours right, but.
All right, yeah, uh, Ms. Fave, uh, well, hold on. We have two, so Ms. Fave, go ahead, yeah, 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 you could come on, Ms. Fave, and then we'll come to you next, I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, um, I had a few things. So, one, as I was talking to my daughter through the dress code question.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to figure that out, I went to the website to see what was actually there, and then I started looking through. Um, especially broken up into only three, you know, high school. Unfortunately, there is inconsistency between the wording for the middle, the elementary and the middle school, which should be the same. So, in fact, if you look at, the one, the elementary school, the law clear as far as it says navy and khaki pants, shorts, et cetera. The middle school says, solid school, or maybe, and then, like, I'm just thinking, we have a lot of parents that. English is a second language, so again, it's like, it's the same thing, if we can get the same wording and.
Well, put a picture up too.
That might, might help, so, um, what, uh, Mr. Curry had shared. Where there was graphics on the information they have, so I don't know where. The wording and those pictures are from the information the teachers have, so again, just, yeah, so we're not, you know, making sure that we're setting up.
Okay, Joy will take, we'll take note of that, our Policy Chair, show, our Policy Chair, and we'll get back to you.
Which is not so busy. Um, I want to give a huge shout out to the Ninth Grade Academy Adventing Teachers, of course. Um, I've been in this district for several years now, it is totally a breath of fresh air, I'm probably gonna repeat myself and say this again. But I'm just, it's just so different from any of the other buildings I've been in. The administration team is present, the, it's a positive atmosphere, they are there for the students. So, we can take that as a role model and share it across the district, whatever Mr. Curry is doing, I feel him, you know.
Keep doing it.
Yeah, keep doing it. It is, it's really phenomenal, I think those kids are a lot more accepting. Uh, one more shout out to, if we had our second science fair in the, at Lansdowne. Our horse is coming out end of May, so now we have two science fairs in the districts, very excited about that. My goal is hopefully still sometime in the future, we can have a district-wide science fair across the elementary schools. Um, so, just a shout out to thousands listening that, if anybody wants guidance, uh, the principal and a. Parent of the whole school had reached out to me to ask about what we do at Ardmore, I'm happy to share that. Um, knew that, and then, so finally, um. I'm not sure if there was district-wide, I know there was in the middle and high school, there were science fairs, because the elementary school students would go up to the middle school.
I really.
And COVID knocked a lot of that down.
I remember Science Olympia, that's it, that is, that's the only thing.
Date program, um, Mr. Walker had brought that up, but it was. Forget, although I think a little too late in the school year, I think there's something in the Philadelphia School District, but there's nothing out here.
Oh, really?
Trying to organize that, uh, you know, it's just a lot of moving pieces. I know I've been in communication with the high school team, um, they did not have a lead science teacher. For some time, so again, you know, staffing issues, I'm doing this as a volunteer parent, um, so we're all trying to. Come together and get this thing happening.
Okay.
And again, whatever, you know, yeah, what her advice I can share.
Really pushing for a district-wide science fair. I would hear you, definitely, definitely hear you. Well, at least you got another school on board with you, that's two. You got some time, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, last thing I wanted to share is, so I heard, I did not attend the zoning meeting in Lansdowne, but I heard feedback. That it did not go so well, um, but I've heard plenty of other comments from community members. And again, really want to push the board, I do want to thank Deidra for all the communication that she does put out, when I asked her to share something. About theater, or whatever it might be, she is on top of it and really quick. Um, but there's so many great things that don't get shared, and it doesn't, you can't just appear on the district. Facebook page or on our website, that's a limited audience. It needs to go, you know, throughout Delaware County, to our neighbors, to the Lansdowne newsletter, wherever, but we had. I don't know how many students were at the ninth grade in the high school honors breakfast, like. We shouldn't have that number, that should be shared, right? Um, that's, like, I think there was, yeah, a huge amount at those buildings, that needs to be known. That, you know, we don't have bad kids. It's unfortunate, you have a handful of bad kids that do something that make the news. Um, and that is the name of this, the district, so we need to combat that with the much more positive stuff. So, we have that, we have a bunch of awards that get given out, that needs to be shared, like I said, we have now two science fairs. We have a list, a long list of really, really positive things, um, that are only shared in certain communities. Like, within the building or within whatever room.
Okay, so you're saying we need to advertise our positives more, yeah, I got you.
And again, outside of the school, we need to, you know, spend.
Montgomery County, let everybody know, or put it in the paper or something of that nature.
And, yeah, because you're gonna, at this meeting, you're gonna hear a lot of raving of what students do. And we have so many more amazing students.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's very interesting, um, the comments from that meeting, but it, we will do that, definitely.
Right, like, some kid brings in drugs and everybody for numbers that.
Yeah.
Somebody wins an award, it gets forgotten really quickly.
Agreed.
So, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, Ms. Plum, you have the floor.
The green thing.
Yep, you're, yep.
Um, I just came up here because last year, we had talked a lot about recess. Um, and I feel like things have gotten better, and then it kind of slid the other way, and now recess again is being taken away from students. Um, at least at Ardmore Elementary. Um, so I just want to see if there's a way that we reinforce that policy again, that really clearly states that for behavior concerns, we cannot take away recess.
Okay.
Or have students put their heads down during recess, like, it's, yeah.
This is the, yeah, this is the first time we're having a public comment since last time.
Yeah.
About recess, so we are going to take in the, of that. Uh, I'm going to tell Dr. B Coats, also notating that, and we will, uh, come up with a resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. All right, um, are there any other? How many, by the way, y'all, you got somebody? Mrs. Wright, oh, yes, Mrs. Wright, hello, you have the floor, Mrs. Wright.
Hi, thank you, uh, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, uh, just wanted to acknowledge, uh, three points. And first of all, I wanted to thank Mr. Wright. For acknowledging the collaboration between the William Penn School District's Administration. Counselors, teachers, parents, and the, uh, Delaware County Community College staff. In reference to the STEM night that will take place on April the twenty-fourth. I think it's a marvelous idea. I am really proud that, uh, the collaboration was able to take place in such a short amount of time. But it, uh, just shows how when you have your strategic plan to guide. Uh, what we do together as the William Penn School District, so much can be done in a very short time. So, I do hope that the students and adults that are with them, uh, will be quite excited. About the STEM night, and I can't wait to hear all that takes place there. Uh, thank you, Mr. Wright, and everyone, uh, involved with that. Second of all, I wanted to congratulate our own Superintendent, Dr. B Coats. On, uh, earning and being awarded the Key Communicator Award. And, uh, it's just absolutely wonderful that you are acknowledged for what you do. And you communicate with the community, we have various platforms and various ways. Uh, Deidra, make sure that all the information gets out, and I just appreciate it, I'm sure that. Many stakeholders in the community appreciate the communication that we have between the district and the community. Because it directly correlates with our priority two of cohesiveness. Where we are partnering with families, communities, and external organizations. To foster shared ownerships of schools and collectively create opportunities for student success. So, we thank you for that, Dr. B Coats, and congratulations. Uh, last of all. I, uh, was quite pleased to hear the, um. Person who talked about the science fair, I'm sorry that I do not know your name, but I'm just glad. Miss who?
Ms. Faver.
Ms. Faver?
Faver, with a B, Faver, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Faver, thank you so very much for spearheading and continuing to spearhead. Uh, the science fair, I hope that, uh, next year, I'll be able to say to you that. Uh, with better mobility, that I can be one of the parent volunteers to help out. Because I think that experience for these students in the elementary schools, and particularly within our K to twelve continuum. I do think that that will be a great benefit, so thank you very much, Ms. Faver.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wright.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome.
Yeah, we have anyone online? Uh, all right, there are no other comments or concerns. Mr. Wright, for the STEM night, we, we're getting two different dates, what date did you state?
Oh, it's in the day, in the morning.
But what, the date?
Oh, uh, April the twenty-fourth.
April the twenty-fourth, okay.
Well, ten A M. to. Uh, ten A M. to one P M.
April twenty-fourth, at the D C I, I mean, at the, um, Delaware County, Delaware County, and you said ten A, Community College, ten A M. to one?
Yeah, one P M.
P M, all right.
And I think, Mr. Wright, when you brought it up the last time, I think we did do additional marketing and outreach based upon the comments you made at a previous meeting.
Yeah. Everybody was just so excited how it really came together. And that thing is gonna build up, because Delaware County is still in transition with the leadership, well as liaison members, a lot of liaison members are, they are, are new. So, this is something that can, spirit, they can see how they can come back and make reports to their community, what we seem to do here.
Awesome, thank you for what you're doing and getting it together. Hopefully, I know it will be a great turnout, it's about STEM, so it has to be. All right, April twenty-fourth, Delaware County, and anybody could come.
Yes.
All right, ten A M. to one P M. Thank you very much, Mr. Wright.
You're welcome.
All right, um. Before I discuss the announcements of future meetings, um, I just, I, I just want to say this, um, I've noticed in the last couple of meetings, we've had, um, employees or people come out and speak about. Um, issues or concerns in their building and things of that nature, and I just, I just really want to push our employees, um. To follow chain to command and talk to your principals and, um, go to talk to administration, whatever the process is. Uh, because I think that, and the reason why I say whatever the process is, because every building, it may look different, sometimes you may have to talk to your principal, sometimes. You have to talk to, um, the superintendent or whatever the, where the issue lies, but I just think that it's important for you to follow that process, because. Sometimes we get up here and you hear things, and some things aren't reported, you know, it, this is not the place just to report, because we have in-house chain of command. So, when you come here, yes, we notate it, but it's good to also go to your principals, go to whatever the issue lies, so it can be documented. Because if we come here, this is not where we just write down and report, this is not official report. So, I, I just want to state that, because in the last couple of months, I've been seeing increased employees come to meetings and speaking about. Issues that they may be having in their building, and I understand, we want to hear as a board, we do want to hear that, but it's also chain of command as well, and. I want your voice to be heard, but I also want whatever's going on to be documented properly and appropriately, so I just want to stress that, because sometimes that's not being done, so. All right, so, um, announcements of future meetings. A policy committee meeting is May second, six thirty P M. Thursday. Uh, that's via Zoom. Then we have, um, our education committee meeting, which is May eighth, six thirty P M., which is a Wednesday, via Zoom. Our budget advisory committee meeting is May sixteenth, which is a Thursday, six thirty P M. via Zoom. Our next committee of the whole meeting is a hybrid meeting, which is Zoom, and also you can come in the building as April twenty-second. All right, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I said that incorrectly. May twentieth, I was on the second line. May twentieth is our committee meeting of the whole, which is a Monday at six thirty P M. And, um, Tuesday, May twenty-first, um, six thirty P M. is our Personnel Committee meeting. And our next Board, Board Business Meeting, um, is also hybrid, and it's May twenty-eighth, Tuesday, um, at six thirty P M.
Uh, President.
Yeah.
What I know, Property Committee is May seventh.
Okay, Property Committee meeting is May seventh? Yep, I missed that, thank you very much. So, May seventh at Tuesday, six thirty P M., that's, uh, via Zoom as well.
It's May twenty-fourth.
Um, well, it's a non-agenda item, yes, Ms. Faber?
I didn't read the meetings, that Tuesday night is about high school conference.
The Tuesday night, uh, so the meeting, the property meeting is May seventh?
No, the next board meeting.
Oh, on the, on the, the day of the next board meeting? All right, hold on. So, the personnel meeting is on Tuesday, May twenty-first, so you're. So, it is a concert that day, is that what you're saying?
It is, no, I thought it was a business meeting.
Okay, so there's no, you don't have any, okay, scratch everything, all right, so. With that being said, thank you, everybody, for your time tonight, this meeting is adjourned.